All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you all for coming. Welcome to the September 28th meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council. We did earlier have a closed session and there's no reportable item out of that. So, we are going to start this evening with the flag salute from the local Cub Scout PAC 537. So I'm not sure who is the gentleman who's going to come up and orchestrate this. There you are, right there. So I will let you take it away, sir.
Color guard attention. Audience, please rise. Color guard advance. Color guard, post the colors. Salute. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Audience may be seated. Color guard dismissed.
And gentlemen, if you could, as you're making your way down the ramp, if you could come up front by the microphone, and since we are on TV, we'll give you a brief moment to introduce yourself, say your name, and what school you're from, and just pass it down the line.
Hello, my name is Matthew Griffin and I go to John Adams Academy.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nathan Olson and I go to Mariposa Avenue Elementary.
Hello, my name is Frankie Pellegrini and I go to Orangeville Open.
Hi, my name is Nathan Sim and I go to Ottoman Elementary.
Hi, my name is Ben Roop and I go to Ridgeview Elementary.
Hello, my name is Jessie and I go to Carrot Drive Elementary.
Hello, my name is Wesley Stager and I go to Pershing Elementary.
Well, thank you very much. Let's have a round of applause for those folks. Good job, gentlemen, and thank you for nobody in the audience taking a knee during our class. All right, so next we have the roll call.
Councilmember Bruins.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Fox.
Present.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Slowey.
Present.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and ATU versed cable systems. This meeting is closed caption and webcast at www.citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays Monday, October 2nd at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14, and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you, Amy. Next item, approval of the agenda. Any issues or concerns from my fellow council members?
Move approval. Second.
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Stayed motion carries. Presentations, Amy?
Our first presentation, number four, is a follow-up presentation on our top 20 longest residents in Citrus Heights.
Welcome, Devin. So is this a reset?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So, last month, we did a, our top 20 list of top 20 longest residents, and when we did that list, we also took the opportunity to put the call out for any residents that have lived in the city continuously for 50 years or more. And we have received many emails and phone calls, and so we are doing a follow-up presentation to you tonight on that.
Great.
So here's the schedule of the top 20 list. We did the longest residents in August. This was the original top 20 list, and so I'm going to read through the list because we have many of the folks that are actually, that are here tonight. So I'll be reading through this top 20 list as well as the additional residents that we received, their names. So Max and Carol Alexander, Dick Baron, Betty Leonard Benson, Keith Brown, the Cook family, Will McCross, Charlotte Carruthers, Jack and Jean Duncan, Chuck and Joy Engival, Linda Farmer, Robert Fritz, Lorraine Fury, Juicy family, which hopefully I pronounced that correctly, I'm sorry, Luann Linekey, Ted Mitchell, Virginia Owens, Joe and Arlene Ray, Colleen Sloan, Bob Stanilan, and Jerry Still. And I just wanted to mention that sadly, Ollie May Juicy actually passed away last week, so she is no longer with us, but we wanted to mention that, and the Juicy family is obviously one of our longest residents that we've had in the city. So who did we miss? We put the call out, we did significant outreach through our social media Facebook pages, Twitter, the city's website, the Citrus Heights Sentinel helped us out a lot, the Citrus Heights Messenger, and we also, it coincided with the community profile in the SACB real estate section, and so they did feature our top 20 list and specifically, you know, mentioned that we were looking for residents who have lived in the city for 50 years or more. So in total, we received 58 additional individuals and families who have been added to our longest residence lists, and here they are in alphabetical order. Bonnie Armitage, Jeannie Baxter, Jo Lynn Kennedy, Robert C. Churchill, Candace Cochran, Diana Cummings, Bill Cunningham, Jerry Cunningham, Mark Cunningham, Marie Duncan, Mark Duncan, Betty Gilbert, Nancy Graham, Sidney Hamilton, Sandra Hill McVeigh, Harold and Shirley Holmes, Wes and Joan Hurlbut, Teresa, sorry, folks, Teresa Kincaid Walker, Jackie Kludgeon, Brent Creach, June Creach, Lori Lendenbach Bates, Rick Lee, Mary Ann Lee Martinez, the mayor family, Angelina McElroy, William and Eileen Moreary, I'm so sorry, Moreary, shouldn't bring my water, David Mossberg, Nancy Muck, Helen Mullins, Carrie Neifert Burchett, Art and Pat Newman, Dolores O'Brien, Lola O'Donnell, Arlene Oldham, Betty Paprocki, Shirley Pass, Frank and Mary Pavan, Roger and Laura Phillips, Jay Purvis, Letty Reed, Sharon Ruber, Root family, Twyla Royer, Lisa Sathas Wells, sorry, Warren and Nancy Saban, Schuman family, Terry Schaefer, Joanne Silver, Ione and Jerry Slocombe, Cletus Sterrett, Virgil Sterrett, Patty Stevens, Dawn and Connie Weber, Cheryl West Macedo, John Whistler, Reno and Marilyn Zalnurado. See, you folks can help me out here, okay? And Patty Zolner. So I know a lot of you are here tonight, and what we'd like to do is invite you all up in a moment to have a photo with the city council, for those that are able. And here are just a few photos that we received. So, and I did note, the one obviously in the top corner, the Wood Hills Way neighborhood, they still get together, they have a Facebook page that they all keep in touch of where the children are doing now, and then on the top right is Wes and Joan Hurlbut, Patty Stevens is in the bottom left corner, and then I think we again have some of the Wood Hills Way neighborhood right there, that family picture, and then the one in the bottom right is our top 20 residents when we did this in August. So we also are still doing our top 20 list, we'll be doing the best photos next month, so if you have your best photos, please share them with us, and with that, I would just like to invite folks up to do a photo.
Yeah, if we could get you all up front here in front of the dais, I'll come down there, the council can gather around. Can you go back one page?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I happen to see a shirt that I had from the 70s in one of these pictures. It brought back memories. So, if your name was called, if you can come on up front, we'll get a picture of as many of you are here. You guys can... (applause)
Okay, guys, come on back and move over a little bit. Hold up.
There you go.
Be good to leave.
(inaudible).
Yeah, we're not gonna, we're not gonna get these people in the closer.
Yeah, pretend, pretend like you like, yeah. Pretend like you like each other and get real close.
There you go.
That's trouble on a half shell right there. Come on, squish in over here. Yeah, that's what you... Where's, where's Jeff?
He's helping them.
Just do your best.
Cheese.
There's Jeff. Oh, yes, someone's doing a panoramic there.
One, two, three, say cheese.
Cheese.
Burger. Great job, thank you all.
What's the oldest person?
I believe Ted Mitchell right here is the longest resident, 91 years. He's been here his whole life.
I know.
That's good for you guys, yes.
All right, folks, we do have some other business to take care of. So feel free to stay.
Oh, it's H, not H.A.
Yes.
Is it Sidney, is that the one you're talking about? And how is it spelled?
We'll give it just a moment. All right, next item.
Next item is presentation number five, a presentation by Sacramento Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce CEO Peter Tatisi. Hopefully I got that right.
Welcome, Peter. And Mr. Dugan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity tonight to give you a quick presentation. One of the things that we're starting this year is to kind of go out to our regional partners and talk to everyone kind of about the results of some of the work that we're doing on that regional basis. So tonight, we're gonna kind of give a recap on some of the work that we've been doing, and for some of you, you've been doing for years with engaging with Sacramento Metro Chamber, and we just thought it would be great to kind of come out to all of our partners and engage in that conversation. So for those who don't know, the Sacramento Metro Chamber is a six-county regional chamber. So we, we represent the same six counties and 23 cities that represent Secog area, and so we are that regional chamber, and we are a regional partner for a lot of our local chambers. So it's not about the Metro Chamber versus the Citrus Heights Chamber, those are, the chamber that Citrus Heights is one that we see as a great and strong partner, as well as all of the smaller chambers within the region. Our focus really is on the regional level, it's why we do programs like CAP to CAP and State Legis Summit, so we can bring the region together and push at those levels, and it's why we don't often come and speak about local issues before this council or other local councils. So we're gonna talk about our regional advocacy and organic business growth at the Sacramento Metro Chamber, and that really focuses around four programs that we work on on a regional basis, Capital to Capital or CAP to CAP, our State Legis Summit, our Study Mission Program, and our Capital Region Small Business Development Center, or SBDC. For advocacy, we really have three platforms that we really engage on in a space that influences policy, and also influences conversations around smart policies that we could be looking at from a regional basis. That includes CAP to CAP, our State Legis Summit, and Study Mission. And I'm gonna turn it over to my senior vice president, Robert Dugan, who's gonna talk to you kind of about especially CAP to CAP, State Legis Summit, and what we've done this year, looking at the numbers, looking at the results of our regional asks, and I'll turn it over to Robert now.
Great, thank you. So quickly, it's important to just cover the importance of regional partnerships, and Peter referenced it with our local chambers. We've got a lot of friends throughout the region that contribute every year to our public policy platform. Several of your department heads, several of you help us develop the 12 federal policy teams and the policy papers that we take back to CAP to CAP and to our State Legislative Summit each and every year. And we go through that very deliberate, focused, regional approach to ensure that what we're carrying and the policies that we're carrying will further economic prosperity for the region. This year, in CAP to CAP at the federal level, we carried 39 policy papers with 103 key distinct policy asks, and that included 40 key infrastructure projects, some of which affected North SAC County and the city of Citrus Heights. As we put those together, it, this year became crystal clear that we had three key themes that most of our policy asks fit under. The first, of course, was the regulatory review, reform, and rollback. We had a unique opportunity this year with transitions in Congress, and Congress working to try and identify how can it, how can it fuel the engine of the economy to really go after some of those regulatory barriers that are actually barriers to cities and counties pursuing their vision for their communities, and had some pretty significant success there. The second piece was the infrastructure, because just as the regulatory environment is the framework, the roads and rail, pipes and wires are really the platform upon which the economy is built. And while nobody can replace the entrepreneurial spirit of an entrepreneur that wants to build a business or grow a business, they need fuel, and that fuels workforce, and we certainly know workforce has been a significant issue for all of us in the region in the last couple of years. So those were our three key policy areas that most of our policy platforms have fit into this year. So, by the numbers real quick, it's always good to go through our numbers. We did have a sellout crowd for both State Legislative Summit and CAP to CAP this year. We took 360 participants to Washington DC from throughout the six-county region, our largest delegation in 10 years, and we did have a total of 279 meetings in Washington. Despite the chaos, we were effective, I think, because of our long tenure doing so, to secure those meetings, including 39 meetings with administrative officials. In some cases, they were new appointees, and we got to inform them and help them understand what federal policy looks like on the ground. In other cases, we were able to meet with the senior civil servants that last from administration to administration that your staff all has to work with on a day-to-day basis to get things done. At the state level, with the State Legislative Summit, we had 131 participants this year. We had a total of 60 meetings that day with legislative and administrative officials with our nine policy teams and nine thematic policy areas. So really good year for CAP to CAP and State Legislative Summit. I won't go through all the accomplishments, but as many of you know, we had some initial key accomplishments that were a byproduct of our regional efforts over the last several years that were passed in that interim budget, that was actually passed the week we arrived in Washington DC. It included important things for workforce like year-round Pell, which will allow our community colleges and our universities to educate students faster, because they can now go to school during the summer if they're on the Pell program, and we can get them out the other end and get them into the workforce and meaningful employment. We also were able to secure some significant transportation priority funding, and at the state level, we were also able to secure a 50% increase in our, our state partnership match, which Peter will talk about a little more in just a minute, for the SBDC program, which directly supports entrepreneurs in growing, developing their businesses, securing the capital they need to grow. Since then, we've been able to follow up on our progress with several key discussions on the regulatory review and reform and rollback status. Several of the major issues that many of you have worked on for years started to see some progress. The waters of the United States debate, some of the Endangered Species Act requirements associated with historic places, into a more reasonable fashion where the federal government's supposed to operate, instead of where they had grown to operate. So I'll, I'll stop that at that point and move on to Study Mission, if I can. We're getting ready to be wheels up, in a week and a half, 10 days, we'll be wheels up to Austin. We have a pretty ambitious agenda in Austin. Everybody knows that Austin has a terrific reputation, they're the live music capital of the world, they've capitalized on their, on their reputation of who they are, but they've also had a very strong innovative economy. So some of the themes we're gonna be looking at, every theme we're looking at, we're looking for something to bring home so we can add to the regional dialogue. Some of the themes are Austin open for business. We know that Austin is in the state of Texas, which has a very different regulatory and tax structure than we do, but what is Austin doing to capitalize on that that we might learn from? Looking at their innovation culture, looking at how they support the creative class, jumping into whole health and homelessness, and seeing what they're doing, because they're definitely partnering in very creative ways there, and then jumping into things like education, and one topic that is of interest, I think, to the city of Citrus Heights, is their adaptive reuse for urban and suburban redevelopments. They've redeveloped the former IBM site, for instance, out in the suburbs, very effectively. So we're looking forward to having a really effective trip in Austin and bringing back some key learnings that we can share. They won't all be a direct fit, but at least they'll fuel the dialogue. With that, I'll turn it back to Peter.
Thank you, Robert.
So as you can see, we fuel economic development through our policy teams, advocacy and support to government, we're really able to engage in the right kind of conversations. We do bring our economic development directors together for our monthly meetings to really engage with kind of the municipal governments to talk about economic development needs, and then what we're gonna kind of jump into now is our Small Business Development Center, which you may or may not be familiar with, and we wanted to make sure, if you weren't, that you, you kind of started to understand this program and also saw some of the results of this program. So, America's SBDC, or Small Business Development Center, is a program of the SBA, and so the Small Business Administration, every county in the, in the country has an SBDC. We happen to run an eight-county regional or capital region SBDC, and we'll go to the next slide, which kind of shows the territories that we, that we cover. So it's basically the Secog territories. We're not all of Eldorado and Plastra Counties, but we're the 916 area codes of those counties where the majority of the populations live, and then we also add in Colusa and Lake Counties to this program. What's unique about the SBDC is, again, it's an SBA program, it's offered to all 50 states, and in the state of California, we're the only state in the union that doesn't fully match or draw down those federal dollars. So it's left on to programs like the Sacramento Metro Chamber to actually raise the non-federal match, to create this free program for businesses in our region. So as Robert mentioned, we were successful this year working with Assemblyman Jim Cooper to actually get a 50% increase in state match dollars, so they went from $2 million to $3 million for the entire state of California. For the state of California to be fully funded to support the SBDC, which would be one of the easiest opportunities for the state to support small business, would be $14.4 million. But unfortunately, California has yet to see the light on why that would be the, the smartest thing they could do to support businesses here in our region and across the state. So again, we serve eight counties. What we do is we do workshops that are free for businesses to learn about different business opportunities, how to start a business, and even workshops on executive series that can help on HR compliance, legal compliance, and different dynamics. If we can go back just one more slide, sorry.
Previous.
It also provides one-on-one consultations, and this is, I think, the most important thing, is that if you're an entrepreneur and you're looking to start your business, we will sit you down with our consultants. We have 18 consultants who service the eight-county region, and they'll do one-on-one consultations with you to help you build your business plan, your financial plan, and get you to that place where you're loan-ready. It also meets with existing small businesses one-on-one to help them see how they can grow, and really the goal is to help access capital. We know that with a lot of small businesses, their number one, their number one problem that's, or barrier, is access to capital, and when you talk to a lot of financial institutions, their number one issue is that we have, they have no one to lend to. So we serve as the SBDC as that bridge that brings small businesses and lenders together so that we can free up capital. So we'll go to the results now. In our, in less than three years, we've helped open up 104 new businesses in the eight-county region, we've serviced over 1,500 clients, we have over 650 jobs that are here in this region because of this program, and the big number is we have over $32 million of capital infused in our local economy through these small business loans. And so putting $32 million to work in our region has helped us, you can see, create new jobs and start new businesses, and so we're very excited and proud just to be able to have metrics that truly show how we are connecting the dots. Because for most of those loans that were created, that 32 million, these people, when they went to the financial institutions, were told no, they came, they referred back to us, and they were told yes. And so this is a program that we can see without it, that money would not be in, in our regional economy. So we can go to the next slide. So in Sacramento County alone, we have with economic, major impact, we have 227 clients, we've served 924, we have 87 new starts just in Sacramento County, 350 jobs that have been created through this program, and just shy of $20 million of capital infused into this county, including Citrus Heights. And this is kind of a great example of how we assisted a property owner to attain a loan for $129,000. It just kind of talks about the process where we engage, and this is not a one- or two-week thing, these are engagements where we take six months to 12 months, 18 months to really work with these clients. And what's great about this program as well, and when you talk to the financial institutions, they have confidence that the clients that we are servicing are going to be able to repay those loans, and they are in repayment, and it's just creating more opportunity for more lending in our region. And so I'll show you, this is our hub locations. What's unique about our model is that we actually take our consultants out to the constituencies. So instead of just housing them and making everyone come to downtown Sacramento, we actually engage across the eight-county region so that we can have more availability across the region, and we're always looking to expand into our site locations so that we can have more one-on-one consultations in the region. And so with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions, should you have any about any of the programs that we're doing in the advocacy space or in the economic development space through the SBDC.
Well, thank you, Peter and Robert, both for coming out. Appreciate the presentation. Any questions or comments from my fellow council members? Many of us do enjoy your CAP to CAP trip. I can say we've met with Robert many a night downstairs in the hotel bar, so we do know lots of talk goes on there, so. Anything?
Thanks for coming out to our community. It's good to see you, and, and know that you're doing really good work.
Yep. You guys all settled in your new office?
We are. We're loving it on the seventh floor, and...
Are you in the same building?
Same building, seventh floor now. We took over this suite 700, the whole seventh floor, and it's, it's a great new space with a lot more energy and light, and great more, great new facilities really to service actually our SBDC clients that do come downtown.
Could've used you about 17 years ago.
Well, thank you for making the trip out from downtown, Aldo.
Good to see you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Next item, Amy.
Next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Fox.
Good evening, thank you. The only actual board that I, we had this, since our last meeting was SEC Metro TV, they finalized the, the final budget approvals, went through that evening, so they are fairly well set to go. There's a few issues that have, have arisen that we've asked for some additional study and some tasks, some committees, to look at in order to better facilitate educational opportunities and information for our schools. I also attended the Chamber Lunch and the League of California Cities Conference, both of which were very informative, met some extremely influential folks, and also some very good sources for information with people who are working in businesses that may not be directly connected with Citrus Heights, but who through other connections we benefit from. One of the fun parts this last time was I attended a ribbon cutting with the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce, where the Citrus Heights Fellowship Church, it's a small church that many of the residents here would know, that's on Mariposa at Church Street, it's just north of Auburn, and they have, two fellowships came together, forming one church, they had a grand opening, and...
They had a grand opening and tremendous time to meet with the co-pastors and with the congregation there. The thing that I found is I know there's a lot of interesting buildings in Citrus Heights, but the sanctuary of that small church, if you've never been there and if you've never seen it, and you are interested in some early structures of timber framing, it's a beautiful structure. It's something to look at and enjoy, and they have preserved it very well. And so if you're into that type of construction or that time period for Citrus Heights, I recommend you go by and see them. Some wonderful folks that you will meet there, and that the building itself is a beautiful structure, and I think it speaks well for the preservation efforts that we see here in town. I met with the Sunrise Park and Recreation District folks, had a good meeting with them, bringing myself up to speed. For those of you who don't know, I was newly appointed, and so I'm spending time getting caught up on the world of the city council and meeting with the different folks. Parks and Recreation was one of the units we deal with, and I had a wonderful meeting with them and picked up some good information. Sunday Fun Day, I had a wonderful time, and thank you for all the folks there that I was able to meet and talk to during that period of time. That's it.
Thank you, Al. Ms. Bruins.
Thank you. The sanitation, Regional Sanitation Board has not met for about three weeks, and in our last meeting, it was relatively simple. We did have a presentation on phytoplankton and whether or not the ammonia that's being discharged into the river was having a negative impact on it. And ammonia's a big deal when it comes to wastewater treatment. And the conclusion of the scientist who made the presentation to us was that it was determined that it has not caused the decline of phytoplankton and came up with a whole bunch of other reasons. So I'll kind of let that sit there. And then we did have a great Sunday Fun Day this year. Really enjoyed it. Park District's just something a little different, and they relocated it to the upper part of Rush Park. I think it worked really well. Also like to thank Sunrise Mall for bringing, and Sunrise Marketplace for bringing in Circus Vargas. I think they just had a top-notch program this year. And it's those kinds of things that we like to bring into Citrus Heights because that brings in people not only from our primary market, but from our secondary market to visit our city and hopefully stay and shop and spend their money here. And that is all I have to report tonight.
Thank you, Jeanne. Mr. Daniels.
Yesterday, I, along with several of my council members and city staff and police department members and chamber members, sat out and did a business walk along Sunrise Boulevard between Woodmore Oaks and Antelope. A lot more businesses than you would think are actually in that area. But I found a little jewel along the way, and I just want to encourage people to go over and try it out. A little pizza place there at Woodmore Oaks and Sunrise called, I think it's Pizza Amour. And it was something, and I got to tell you, I literally live almost across the street, but it was something that just blew me away. It was like a little Italian place that you could go to and bring the family and have some fun, so just go try it. Go check them out. And it was pretty cool. I can't believe I haven't been there. But a lot of people, a lot of good things from the walk. And if you're listening to this and/or you know somebody that has a business in Citrus Heights, highly encourage you to have them either reach out to the city, to the chamber, to get help with having their business thrive. And there's a lot of resources available, and we obviously want your business to thrive in Citrus Heights. So, you know, if you're looking for a little help or just even want to make it better and it's going good already, just reach out to the city, the chamber, and pick up some good resources. Next up, I had the pleasure of going to the air quality board meeting this morning, and lots of good things. We're cleaning your air as good as we can, better than before. But I want to reassure the citizens of Citrus Heights, we got a nice little report back on the cap and trade funding that will come out. And out of about $255 million of it, a little piece of that chunk, we'll probably see about $2 million of it in the Sacramento region. So rest assured, your tax dollars are being collected and sent to the LA and San Francisco area. Next up, kind of a disappointing thing that I saw just tonight as I got to the council, we get the San Juan Alumni Association report. And the title is what just kind of really made my heart sink. I'm a Spartan, and so it says enrollment may determine San Juan High School future. San Juan is down to 620 students this year. It's just extremely sad to see that. Mesa is at 900. And, you know, the only reason that it's like that is because of the families in Citrus Heights accepting a notion that these are somehow less performing schools. I can tell you, my son goes to Mesa Verde. He's a senior. He's in the AP programs and stuff like that, and he's headed to Cal Poly, and he's gotten an extremely valuable education going to Mesa Verde. And I think he would have gotten the same education going to San Juan because it would have been what he made of it. And so if you're looking at the possibility of your child heading off to high school next year or in the next couple of years, think about the fact that it's who we send to our schools that really kind of determine those silly little numbers that people want to say is a reflection of the school, when it really, I don't think, is. And so my point is, send your kids to the local schools, send them to your home schools, your community schools, and San Juan and Mesa Verde would be thriving schools if you did that. And then finally, I had an opportunity to sit down with a person who works with a company that has a product, and we don't usually get up here and, you know, sell products or whatever, but I think this is a good public safety thing to bring forward. It's called Safer Lock, and it basically involves a combination lock that you put on your prescription bottles. And a couple of facts that came to me through this process was every day, every single day, 3,000 kids will experiment with a prescription drug for the first time. 90% of all addictions start in the teenage years. 70% of drugs that are abused are found in the home, but only 3% are locked up. 144 people die every day because of overdosing, and no one starts drugs by shooting up heroin. They do it mainly by looking at prescription drugs. The goal, obviously, it's just, it's prevention through diversion. So prevention of diversion, I'm sorry. Keeping these medications out of the hands of your teenagers mainly, and obviously out of your younger children who might be exposed to an accidental type of overdose is important. I think it's a public safety issue, and we're not immune to it in Citrus Heights. I'm sure this happens here without doubt. I would like the council members to maybe consider us looking at finding ways to maybe partnership with somebody to get these out to our community. I can think of a medical center that's coming into play just down the street that might be a good partner. The city of Rancho Cudopot, the police department purchased 1,000 of these, and they gave them out to people who did a drug take-back. So the medications are either expired or not used anymore. Instead of flushing them down the toilet for little Nemo to experience, they want you to bring them in and turn them back in. And in the process, they would give you one of these things. And so, and the final thing I want to say about it is that I just got this today, some information that the California Narcotics Officer Association voted unanimously to endorse this product, and I think they have a 50-year history. This is only the third product they've ever endorsed as an association. So I'm going to pass it down, let my other council members look at it. The unique thing about this is that it comes, again, with a combination lock that you set yourself. You can change if it gets compromised, so that's nice. And you can take the top off if you want and put it on your regular prescription bottle, too. So I think this is a public safety issue. I think it's something that we can, as a city, as a council, maybe be the forefront of, you know, maybe even preventing one type of accidental or overdose-type situation. And I'm just hoping that my other council members feel the same way. My goal is to have us look at it and maybe figure out a way to create partnerships to get them out to the community.
Thank you, Brett. Vice Mayor Miller.
What's the combination? You're not telling me.
You could have just said it.
Oh, okay. There you go. Well, Mr. Fox mentioned about getting out and meeting folks in the community. And Friday, we had the pleasure of sitting down for lunch with Henry Leaf, the general manager of Regional Transit, and we were able to discuss some ideas and future improvements for transportation in Citrus Heights. Sunday Fun Day was mentioned. I had a great time. I do like where they moved it. It seemed like there was a lot more shade, and it was comfortable, and a lot of folks came out. So it was a fun Sunday. And Monday, had a regional transit meeting, and wasn't anything too major discussed. One of them was an informational item where folks have been asking about going back to providing a lifetime pass for seniors age 75 and over. And it would be really a small amount to do. It'd cost the district about $55,000. Unfortunately, in the Public Utilities Code, not Commission, but in the Public Utilities Code, what you offer seniors, you have to offer the disabled. And all of a sudden, that became about a $3.5 million hit and something we really couldn't do. So we're looking at ways to get around that, and, but again, it'd have to be something done legislatively, I think, at the state level. But we're looking at ways to help the seniors that just don't have any other choice, they've gotten on in years and maybe can't drive anymore. So mobility is just such a key in life. And I will concur with Councilmember Daniels about the education. It's, you can get a great education at our two high schools. And my son went to Mesa Verde. He did end up at Cal Poly, and he did four years and then got a master's, and he's back teaching at Mesa Verde. In fact, one of his students is Brett's son. So it's just carrying it forward. Yeah, very small world. And that's all I have.
Thanks, sir. All right, just a few. 9/19, I went over to Mariposa Elementary School and met with the fourth and fifth-grade classes over there. You think you all are a tough audience out there. These kids had some prepared questions. I think their parents helped them with, but I managed to get through that. 9/21, speaking of education, I met, the chamber had their education committee over at Mesa, so I met over there with many of the principals. I have a couple of follow-up meetings starting next week with, in particular, the principal of San Juan High School and Sylvan. And Jeanne and I both sit on the education committee. And to Brett's numbers earlier, you know, there's 12 high schools in the San Juan Unified High School District. We have two of them in our city, and they are both the lowest enrolled out of all those 12. So, you know, we just have to keep an eye on that as we move forward. Last Friday, myself, Al, and Steve went over to San Juan Mercy to celebrate 50 years of the San Juan Mercy Hospital. We met the bishop and many of the sisters who formed the Sisters of Mercy over 120 years ago. So--
Not all were there for 120 years.
Right, most of those weren't there. Thank you for that.
Very old.
Brett mentioned the business walk. I just wanted to throw out a couple of thank yous on that, particularly to the chamber, to Sandrine Demattei, she's, I think she's here, interim director for the work. For the city, Rhonda Sherman, our economic executive, economic development director, if you will, over that. And the one who did all the hard work, Devin Rodriguez, who's our economic development manager. Couldn't have happened with coordinating all those folks going out and working those businesses without the packages and all the pre-work that was done. So thank you for that, you ladies. Did want to, this Sunday, did want to invite anybody who's around out at Rivercat Stadium. 1:00, the Second Annual Citrus Heights PD will be paying the SAC PD to benefit-- you cutting me off out there, Amy? Come on. I got a couple more minutes. Playing for Powell, it was a great game last year. We hope to do a little better, but we put on a good show for our first time out there. And lastly, if you folks have been following the state legislation or sessions, there's 702 bills sitting on the governor's desk that were passed. They need the governor's signature to go into law. Many of those, quite frankly, are not friendly or detrimental to our city. There's a telecommunications bill that allows the cell phone companies to put their equipment on any city light pole or any smud pole and only pay $250 a year rent, where typically today, you know, that's negotiable. It isn't so much the rent, although we are dealing with multi-billion dollar companies here. It's the fact that your property, your streetlights, your street poles, can have the telecommunications companies come in and put these items on without our permission. And they don't even have to get necessarily our design review. So if down the road, these things, if the governor signs it and you see these things start going up all over the city, you can't blame us because it's actually at the state level, not the local level. There's several housing bills, bonds and that, that are coming forth. But again, there's probably five or six bills down there that we actively lobbied against, and they still managed to go forward. There were several others that we lobbied against and didn't go forward, but unfortunately, this year, there's more detrimental bills out there to the local taxpayers than there are to anybody else. So more to come on that. That's it from my end. We'll jump to public comment. Amy?
Members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments, and any public comments beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda. And the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times.
Thank you, Amy. So I have two speakers for this particular item. I have seven or eight, but that's on the agendized item, so I'll come back to that one. But Arthur Ketterling, you'll be first, sir. You have five minutes, followed by Dr. Janer Karpinski-Costa.
I'm Arthur Ketterling, from Citrus Heights. And I only want to ask a question on the, what is on the agenda for this coming fiscal year for, say, like for roads and everything? I know that we don't have much, as far as like where bridges are and all. Do you know what, if, anything on that, and all after--
Yeah, Arthur, we do have a five-year capital improvement plan that our general services execute on a daily, monthly, annual basis. Obviously, it's dependent somewhat on funding. As you know, there was a recent increase to the gas tax that passed at the state level.
Yes.
So that actually, I think it goes into effect next month, but truthfully, we really won't see much from that till next year. It's kind of a delayed. But there is a plan, and if you, you know, if you want me to, I can follow up with you offline. But every year, we do annual overlays on various streets.
Yes.
You know, a lot of drainage projects ongoing.
I know that--
Have a particular area you're concerned about, or?
Not any one particular area, but I was just over in general. And I know why, and also, I put on the card, like about transit, I know that there, it's with Steve Miller, he's on the transit board himself, but I would like, the reason why I'm mentioning this is because I know you have a thing on right now, like of wanting the people's input for the meet the transit needs. It's not just Citrus Heights, but all over, like even places that don't have, that has never had transit.
Yeah. I would agree with you, Arthur, and that's part of the reason we're doing the survey is to find out what the needs are and then work with Regional Transit through Steve and others to find out what are the solutions. At the end of the day, we only have so much money that we can direct towards it.
Oh, I realize that.
But I think we can do a better job spending it.
Yes.
Thank you, Arthur.
Thank you.
So Dr. Jana.
Good evening, Mayor Slowey, council members, city manager. I'd like to introduce you to Natalie Price. She is the new president of the Citrus Heights Lions Club.
Welcome.
And I am here as president of the Area 10 Neighborhood Association SOAR. She's going to kind of tell you what's up.
Thank you for allowing us to come up here today, council members and Mr. Mayor. SOAR and Citrus Heights Lions Club have collaborated on a pretty unique project. I believe we passed flyers forward. Did you all? Okay, wonderful. So, we truly believe that the voices of our youth need to be heard. And as adults, we tend to have inhibitions. We start thinking, oh, I would love to do this project. I would like to see this change. But we don't know what the first step should be, or we don't know if people will agree with it, or if we'll have the money. We have all these questions. Kids don't have that. They just have ideas, and they want to thrive with these ideas. So, we are working together to allow our youth from first grade through twelfth grade to come up with projects that they think would benefit the city of Citrus Heights. They get to decide how they want to present these projects. Maybe it's just a written report. Maybe it's a trifold board. Maybe it's a YouTube video. They're pretty tech savvy. I'm not. But kids are, are pretty amazing. They're going to come to the Little Sylvan Clubhouse on November eighth and give a presentation of their project idea. We have members of SOAR. We have members of Lions. And thank you very much. We do have our mayor, Jeff Slowey, as a guest judge, to judge the projects that these kids are bringing forward. They have an opportunity to earn prize money that must be spent on their projects in Citrus Heights. And then they also have an opportunity to get help from the Lions as able bodies to help these projects move forward. We're really here today just to let the city know that this is a project that is going on. We've distributed our flyers to the San Juan Unified School Elementary Schools. Unfortunately, they have a clause that we can't bring the flyers to middle schools or high schools. And so, there is a huge gap in who we were able to reach, just in the school district. And we need the voice of parents and, and city members to let the middle school kids know, and let the high school kids know, that they have an opportunity really to make an impact in Citrus Heights. And we want to invite the entire city to come and support the youth on November tenth, Friday, at nine AM until noon at the Citrus Heights Community Center. All of these projects will be on display. And so, the city can come and see the ideas that our youth has and support these children, and really help encourage them. We want them to know that their voices can be heard and that their ideas are wonderful. Anything you'd like to add, Jana?
I just want to add that SOAR's role is, we're, we're supporting this financially with the prize monies that we earned selling our little fireworks in front of Sprouts. So, we want to thank everybody who bought their fireworks in front of Sprouts. And always says, where's the money going? So, this is, we're hoping, and then if the top project of the four groups, we hope to fund their project. And if it's more than we can handle, then we can, as a nonprofit, we can seek additional sponsors for a project. But, you know, we're gung ho to see these kids succeed in what they want to do.
And when Jana mentioned the four groups, we are not going to judge a first grader against a twelfth grader. So, we do have them broken down. We'll judge first through third together, fourth through sixth, seventh through ninth, and tenth through twelfth, so that they are competing against their peers, so to speak. Does the city council member have any questions for us?
No, but I would actually take one more flyer from you. I, I know you said you can't get them the flyers, but I am meeting with three of the principals next week. And if these fell out of my pocket on their desk, so be it.
I was gonna ask that question. How can we get it in schools?
I'll take three.
If I might, Jeff?
Want more?
Natalie, if you would, we need to talk. There is a competition that's running simultaneous about the same time you have here.
Okay.
It's a competition for photography and videoography for students.
Wonderful.
And I have a flyer, I believe I still have a flyer that will address that. So, if you and I can talk, or Jana, if you and I can talk, I will try to get that flyer and the information to you, because it might match up at the same time. And the folks that you're dealing with, those, the students, they may be able to, are interested in also participating in this additional competition.
Absolutely. Collaboration gets a lot of things done. So, all right. Thank you all so very much.
Both of you. Jana, remember to...
You are a member of SOAR, Steve, so you can come anytime.
Alrighty. Those are the only speaker sheets I have for public comment. Again, I have eleven for another item here. So, when we get there, we'll talk about how much time I give you folks. Amy, next item.
Next item is the consent calendar. Item six, seven, eight, nine, and ten.
And please note, item six, the minutes from our last meeting, there was an update made, and we were all handed it here tonight. So, if you so move the consent calendar, it would include the amended minutes, item number six.
So move.
Okay. We have motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstained, motion carries five zero. Next item.
The next item is regular calendar. Item eleven is a subject to approve Sunrise Marketplace Development Fund application for the pop-up stadium project. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving revised development fund guidelines and adopt a resolution approving three-hundred thousand from the development fund to the Sunrise Marketplace for the pop-up stadium, authorizing the city manager to execute, execute agreement, not to exceed three-hundred thousand, and liquidating two-hundred and six credits from the Economic Development Treatment Capacity Bank and allocating liquidated funds to the development fund.
Thank you. Ms. Rodriguez?
Good evening again. So, we will, I will be presenting an application that we received to the development fund. The Sunrise Marketplace is interested in requesting funding to purchase the equipment and the actual components that would, that would create this pop-up stadium. So, before we delve into why staff is recommending this project, we just wanted to review kind of the main project components itself. So, the Sunrise Marketplace, which I may say SMP as we're going through the presentation, has requested three-hundred thousand from the city's development fund to purchase a multi-year mobile entertainment venue, so the pop-up stadium. The city's investment would be leveraged with additional contributions from the Sunrise Marketplace and the Sunrise Mall for programming, marketing, operations, and maintenance of this stadium, for a total investment of two-point-six million over the life of the, the P-Bid, the Property-Based Improvement District. So, the stadium would have a flexible seating capacity up to two-thousand-five-hundred. It would be activated from May to September, starting next year, 2018 through September 2021, which is the end of the current term for the Sunrise Marketplace P-Bid. And, or could be obviously longer if the P-Bid is renewed. It would be located primarily at Sunrise Mall and the Sunrise Marketplace, but some components would have the possibility to travel throughout the district if there was a possibility of having an event somewhere else. And then, it could accommodate a range of events from theater and concerts to craft and vendor fairs, sports tournaments, high school and college graduations, food festivals, fundraisers, so a variety of different events. The project is being presented as a rental model. So, the venue, there, there's been a lot of research that's been done, obviously, and also past experience from the Sunrise Marketplace when they did the Sacramento Capitals and the concert series in 2012 and 2013. And this rental model is really the most financially feasible option, as well as the best from a risk management perspective. So, the, the way that it would work is that the Sunrise Marketplace would bear the full responsibility and liability for managing and programming the stadium. The city would incur a one-time expense for purchasing the stadium. The venue would be operated as a rental venue in the same way that other venues in the region operate, like the Harris Center, Crest Theater, Memorial Auditorium, and our own community center. And this would distance SMP from a lot of risk, but it also removes opportunities for different revenues, such as sponsorship sales and ticket sales. So, they would not control these aspects because they would be renting the venue out to a third party. And then, the Sunrise Marketplace would receive a venue rental and village income because they would manage the, the village area that would provide food. And in order to remain competitive, some of these costs would not be, you know, passed on in the rental, but would, would need to be covered. So, a lot of, there's a lot more detail that is in the actual application that was included in the packet. But that's kind of a brief overview of what this project consists of. So, I mentioned the seating capacity, and it would be a maximum of, of two thousand, but it could, and it could go down. Or maybe in future years, if the need arise, you know, if additional seating was purchased, that, that is a possibility. But based on Sunrise Marketplace's discussions with event producers and a lot of research on existing venues, this is really an ideal number. There, and this is a quote from the B in 2012, when they had the concert series, that there is, it really fills a gap in what our, in the current market that we have. There's a lot of smaller venues, and there's a lot of larger venues, but there's no venues that are of this size. And so, with this seating capacity and with kind of the outdoor nature and our central location in the region, it has a really good possibility to be very successful as the previous concerts, series, and capitals were. So, project objectives. The goal of this project is to drive traffic and consumers to the Sunrise Marketplace, the city's economic engine, to create positive economic impact, to generate positive awareness for SMP and the city, to elevate the image of SMP and the city, to reduce leakage to other entertainment venues and retail centers. We do not currently have an entertainment option of this kind in the city, and to provide an experience-based amenity for city residents and the Sunrise Marketplace visitors. So, I just wanted to touch on just a couple of those. So, this is data of the previous concert series and, and the Capitals in 2012 and 2013. And, you know, the, the primary objective for the Sunrise Marketplace since the beginning has been to drive traffic and consumers to the marketplace. And they did research back in 2009 and 2010. And what, but that market research showed was that they not only needed to sustain their primary trade area, which includes Citrus Heights, Orange Vale, and portions of Fair Oaks and Carmichael, but also need to extend into that secondary trade area in order to remain economically viable for the long term. And so, that's what these PTA and STA shows you. That's the percentage of, of those that attended, who was from the primary trade area and who was from the secondary trade area. And so, it really does a good job of showing how these special events attracted people from that larger secondary trade area and beyond that. When they did follow-up research in 2014, after these events took place, it revealed that the Sunrise Marketplace, actually, their trade area grew. The, the primary trade area added one zip code, and nine zip codes were added to the secondary trade zone. And that resulted in an increase of over a hundred and twenty-thousand households that was being added to the Sunrise Marketplace trade area. So, it really showed how these special events were successful in driving traffic. It also create positive economic impact. This is field research from when the Capitals and Concert Series happened back in 2012. Over twenty thousand people attended. Of that, almost half, almost half shopped or dined in the district while they came to one of the events. And then, also the average dollar spent on the day of the event, around seventy dollars per person, was spent in the district when they came to either a concert or the Sacramento Capitals, for a total economic impact of seven-hundred-and-sixty thousand. In addition to the project objectives, the project also addresses several city goals. Our economic development strategy has, one of our four key strategies is to support retail sectors' adaptation to the changing marketplace, specifically identifying ways to support and encourage SMP's promotion efforts and leveraging existing or future signature events. Our general plan goals, eleven and twelve, also speak to supporting the Sunrise Marketplaces as the heart of our commercial activity, as well as creating and inviting and distinctive identity for the Sunrise Marketplace. And then finally, our awareness campaign, which we're currently working on the planning stages of, and then is coming to a close soon. You know, the major goal of that campaign is to attract new businesses, consumers, and residents to the city, to shop here, live here, do business here, and to create a positive awareness of Citrus Heights, not only for our residents and businesses, but in the, across the region. So, why is, we have done a lot of research, a lot of review on this application. A lot of discussions have taken place. And these are the main reasons that we are recommending approval of this application to the development fund. It will promote and raise positive awareness of Citrus Heights, positive economic impact on the city's economic engine, which we discussed about the, how these special events can impact the Sunrise Marketplace as a commercial district, provides an entertainment option that we currently do not have. It really fits the purpose of the development fund. The purpose of the development fund was to support projects that were cost prohibitive and were creative and out of the box. A different model than the previous stadium efforts. This has the stronger possibility of having a long-term, being able to continue it year after year, and that it meets our development fund criteria. So, if the funding is approved, staff is requesting that the city manager be, given authority to execute a grant agreement. And these are the main things that we would be including in that grant agreement. It would grant three-hundred thousand for the purchase of the stadium and its components. The stadium management, they would, the Sunrise Marketplace would use a private company to manage the operations of the stadium venue. And there would also be the creation of a stadium committee, which would include members of the Sunrise Marketplace Board, city staff, and other individuals to review the program guideline, or the guidelines for how the stadium would be operated. CHPD would be used for events on a case-by-case basis, as mutually agreed upon by SMP and CHPD. If the P-Bid reached the end of its current life and it was not renewed, a prorated amount of the revenue from selling the stadium, selling the equipment, would be returned to the city. The city will have branding opportunities inside the stadium to communicate the city's participation and emphasize the location of the stadium. The city would be, have the ability to use the stadium and its components based on availability, but we would need to pay for any transportation and setup costs. There would be an annual report requirement to city council demonstrating the venue's success in attracting more consumers, its economic impact, and its effect on creating positive awareness of the city. And finally, the city to be fully indemnified. So, those are the key points that would be included in our grant agreement. And then, as I mentioned, we are requesting this funding from the development fund. And we're also asking that we liquidate a portion of our sewer credits to fund this. So, this is just a review of the current, the full life of the development fund that we've had it. We initially liquidated sewer credits when, when we started this fund. And we have quite a few commitments for this fiscal year. And so, we recommend that we would liquidate more sewer credits in order to put it in the development fund and fund this application. By doing that, we still have a sufficient amount of sewer credits available to new businesses and businesses that are expanding in the city to take advantage of those sewer credits. And then finally, this is just a review of the action items. We're requesting quite a few action items for this. We would need to, we're requesting to approve revised development fund guidelines. This is just to add business associations as an eligible applicant under this specific part of the development fund guidelines, to approve three-hundred thousand from the city's development fund for the pop-up stadium, authorize the city manager to execute a grant agreement, and liquidate two-hundred and six sewer credits for, for three-hundred-and-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars, and allocate that to the development fund.
Great. Thank you, Devin, for that very, very thorough report. Again, from my fellow council members, we have a plethora of people who want to speak. So, what I'd ask is if you have questions of staff at this point, to ask them. And then, we'll come back to your overall comments after we've heard from the public.
I have one.
Yes.
Please.
In addition to the three-hundred thousand that's being requested, whether, and what triggers this is the, the item where they could use CHPD on a, you know, agreed-upon basis. Will there be any other financial obligations on the part of the city once the stadium is up and in use?
In other, just other expenses? I mean, the CHPD use would be something that's come, would be separate for agreement on how that would be funded.
So, right. So, that just triggered the question.
Mm-hmm.
But that's not my specific question. My specific question is, we're being asked to provide a grant for three-hundred thousand dollars. Is there, are there any other financial obligations? Is there any other financial obligations on the part of the city in relationship to this project in addition to that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any additional questions?
Well, to go back to Jeannie's initial thing, we would be talking about some reimbursement for police services, say, in a larger event.
That's my understanding.
Right, it'd be no different than the contracts we have with other
Right, okay.
Exactly.
Businesses that use them.
There would be private security for most events.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
If there's no additional questions, so I do have 11 speakers, not going to give you five minutes each, because I see you all wearing blue shirts out there. I don't see any red, so I'm guessing you're going to probably speak with a unified voice. I'll call you up, 11 of you, I'll give you each two minutes, and we'll try to get through this. So Janet, Marcado. Yeah. Marcado. Kathleen Carpenter, you will be next. Good afternoon, evening. Welcome.
Good evening to the city council and mayor. I'm a Fair Oaks resident for the past 10 years. When we first moved here to the Sunrise Mall, they had the fireworks display, they had the tennis tournaments, they had the outdoor concerts at the Sunrise Marketplace and small concert venues over next to Marshalls. Everyone would come over to my home, I live in the North Ridge area by the golf course. We would have drinks and proceed to the Elephant Bar, Black Angus, Logan's, and then proceed to the wonderful concerts at the Sunrise Marketplace. We enjoyed seeing Dave Koz, America Three Dog Night, et cetera. Whenever, when everyone, when it ended, then we started going to the Radisson. Well, you know, the Radisson is no longer there, so that is not happening. So now we're going, heading up to Folsom to the Palladio. And if you want to see top groups, then you have to go out to Thunder Valley, and if the wind is blowing in the wrong direction, then you're going to be smelling the dump. So I just hope and pray that the Citrus Heights City Council will decide on bringing back the Sunrise Marketplace concerts and activities to bring this community together. And I did have just a couple other little pointers. By bringing the concerts to Sunrise Marketplace, it would generate economic vitality to promote extra money coming into the community in such a way as going out to dinner shopping and spending money in general. And the concerts would also promote cultural diversity by giving, getting the people out, by enjoying the music, which would generate more harmony in the community. The concerts would also promote the city and make the city the name and recognized in the recreations, and bring a greater awareness of activities right here in our own backyards. The concerts would also allow the community to socialize, exercise, and come together with friends and family. And it also would maximize the area. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Janet, and we'll do our best to make sure that Citrus Heights can start taking your Fair Oaks money again here in town.
[laughing]
We'll work on that for you.
I am really close to the Citrus Heights borderline lips. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Kathy Lynn. And then followed by Susie Rogers.
Kathy Lynn Carpenter, Executive Director of the Sunrise Marketplace. I'll just take one second to explain the CHPD. So the arrangement that we have is that on that committee that'll operate, PD will have a representative there, and we'll just get feedback, and not every event will need CHPD. We'll have security at every event, but we would pay for that. So that would not be a city cost.
Right.
So there was a situation where we said, well, we just, this isn't, we got to have more than regular security, and we all agreed that we really do need a PD presence there. That's just a part of our cost of managing the stadium. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
More to come on that, yeah.
Okay, great. So happily, we're not giving a presentation this evening, because Devin did do a very thorough and very outstanding job on the staff report. I really just wanted to come up and take a moment to thank Devin and Rhonda, and of course, city manager Chris Boyd, who have worked really hard and really appreciate their guidance and all their hard work on the project. It's been a long road, and we really appreciate the partnership. Tonight, you're going to hear from several speakers, as you know, you guys be brief, our board, and others are here. I want to make a quick note to say that Chrissy Woodards really did want to be here this evening. She had emergency oral surgery this afternoon and could not make it, but she really did want to be here. Susie Rogers, the marketing manager, and the SMP marketing chair is here. You talked about that. I really just want to say, you know, it's been 17 years, and our fates really are tied together. They have been from the very beginning. We've worked on so many projects and so many goals together. Oh, I did the CHPD thing. And this will just be, I think, another successful product of that mutually beneficial relationship. And I have one more thing to say, because I think it was Connie, I sent Connie back there. So I don't know about you guys, but I'm looking forward to bringing to life one of Mel's great ideas, and I think Jeff, anyone see, the Burger Brews and Blues Music Festival. So let's make it happen. All right, thank you.
I had a quick question, because I know you conducted the surveys, and when we talked about secondary trade area and beyond, we were seeing folks come from Reno and the Bay Area to some of these concerts.
Oh, yeah, when we said, yeah, Sacramento, Auburn, Placerville, some people just follow bands, you know, so they even come from LA, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We call those groupies.
Groupies, yeah.
All right, Susie, followed by Andrew Granulius?
Granulius.
Granulius.
Good evening. Thank you, mayor and council members. As Kathy Lynn mentioned, Christie Woodard unfortunately was not able to be here, so I'm going to share some comments specifically from Christie. Sunrise Mall and Spinoza Real Estate Group, our property ownership, fully support the pop-up stadium and are committed to working together with Sunrise Marketplace and the city to ensure it successfully achieves its goals. As Chair of SMP, I participated with the rest of the board in a year-long strategic planning project, which Andy Genullius will address in more detail. Both the Palm Tree Lighting Project and the pop-up stadium were identified as important priorities and effective avenues for SMP to accomplish the goals set out in the strategic plan. From an industry perspective, we know that retailers and shopping centers are looking for ways to create interactive experiences and give customers additional reasons to leave the house. Dining and entertainment options have proven to be successful draws, and while SMP has more than 60 dining options, we have little in the way of entertainment. The stadium provides that compelling reason. We see many surrounding jurisdictions make entertainment a priority. Some successful examples include The Barn in West Sacramento, a private-public sector partnership, the Rockland Quarry Amphitheater, and in Roseville, the city invested 4.5 million in Vernon Street Town Square, activating the space with concerts and other exciting events. While the stadium is temporary, there are benefits to creating a soft structure, one that is nimble, can accommodate a variety of activities, and can be adaptable to different spaces. To continue to be successful, Sunrise Marketplace and the city must also remain nimble, innovative, and resourceful. We must continue to evolve and shake things up to attract shoppers and potential tenants. One other thing I wanted to mention was, on the heels of what Councilmember Bruins talked about with Circus Vargas, being at Sunrise Mall recently. In the past week, while they were at Sunrise Mall, we received over $50,000 in non-paid media impressions. They mentioned Sunrise Mall and Citrus Heights several times, so the awareness that these large or significant events are going to draw to the pop-up stadium, to Sunrise Marketplace, and to the city of Citrus Heights is tremendous, so very exciting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Susie. Andy, followed by Wes Irvin. Welcome, Andy.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to stand before you.
Uh-oh. No group.
Talk about groupies.
Is that your chorus line?
Holy cow. Anyway, I've been a member of the board since its inception. I've been involved in Citrus Heights Real Estate since 1969. I've watched them all be built and converted from pasture land to this thriving, economic, dynamic, commercial enterprise that we see today. It hasn't been easy all the time. We've had tremendous competition from Folsom, from Sacramento, from Roseville, as you know. So we've had to try to work very hard to try to stay ahead, and in this situation here, we're also filling in gaps where they can't or don't have the ability to do something, and we will have that ability to do something with this pop-up, this pop-up stadium. I don't want to repeat so many of the things that Devin produced in her report, which I think was fantastic, but I did want to say a couple of things that we need this thing. We need to bring in people from our secondary market especially, but also make the primary market something that the people in Citrus Heights and surrounding areas feel so comfortable in coming to the mall, in coming to the area that we have. So it's my urgent request that you go ahead and approve this grant for the pop-up stadium. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andy. Appreciate it. Wes Irvin, followed by Bill Dan Duker. Welcome. Wes, you're representing the chamber?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and staff. I do represent the Chamber of Commerce. I own a home-based business on Canoe Birch, not far from the Sunrise Mall, and currently co-chair of the Chamber's Economic Development Committee. With me is Sandrine DiMattei, who's the interim executive director, and Rosa Ambach, who is our, a member of our board and our education committee chair. We support the staff recommendation to allocate economic development funds towards the SMP's pop-up stadium. This is an important project for the chamber and for two very important chamber members, the Sunrise Marketplace and the Sunrise Mall. The benefits and synergies of this project have been well articulated by Devin in this excellent staff report. I'd like to very quickly reinforce three points that are important to the chamber. The Sunrise Mall, as has been mentioned, has been the city's core retail tax generator since cityhood and before, and this project will drive additional traffic and revenue to the area, thus helping our local businesses thrive, which is very important to the chamber. The funds will effectively leverage much larger investments by SMP in the Sunrise Mall, modest city investment, given the much larger investments by other cities around on similar projects that you've just heard about. Lastly, the Citrus Heights Chamber has just sent you a letter expressing our desire and support for increased investments by the city in economic development. This project is a perfect example of what we've meant. We look forward to discussing other projects with city staff quite soon. So we urge you to vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Wes.
Good evening, mayor. Council members. Am I not on there?
Go ahead, couple minutes.
Out of order.
Go ahead. Oh, are you on here somewhere?
Good evening. The stadium gives the chamber the opportunity to fulfill a longtime goal of creating a large signature fundraising event. We look forward to working with the Sunrise Marketplace and the Sunrise Mall to bring this to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandrine. Great, all right. Thank you, folks.
Did you have a question?
No. All right, Bill, all about Kevin Webb.
Bill Van Duker, should I just say me too and sit down?
That works for me, Bill.
Yeah, I have a microphone.
You got to go for it. Go ahead.
Good evening. As one who participated in the efforts to incorporate Citrus Heights, I remember that we all had dreams of what our city could be, but I also have in my files a newspaper clipping with the banner headline that went the whole width of the page that says, "Lafco had yanked the mall out of the boundaries of the city." I shudder to think what would have happened if that amputation had persisted, but cooler heads prevailed and the mall remained in the city boundaries. But we didn't have any dreams of anything like the Sunrise Marketplace being in fruition when we were working on the city. It was something beyond our expectations, but it's a shining example of what can happen with city participation. We definitely would not be where we are today without SMP. I support the application for the funds, and I believe it will put the city on the map. Roseville has its fountains with its Friday, Saturday night concerts. Old Town has been mentioned, West Sacramento, The Barn has been mentioned. Those of who say that we don't have the money, that we need to rebuild our streets and our pave, rebuild our reserves and pave our streets, I don't agree with those. When I was a college student in Seattle in the late 50s, before many of you were born, the Seattle World Fair was in development. A group of folks had this idea of a Space Needle, but they had no money and no property, but they had a vision, and the Space Needle is now a historic landmark. Redding, a little backwater town north of us, wanted a bridge across the river. They only had $3 million for the bridge, but they pursued a world-class architect. And now they have a $23.5 million world-renowned bridge. This stadium may not be at the level of the Space Needle or the Sundial Bridge, but it can bring something unique to Citrus Heights. I don't want the epitaph of this city to be, we had great reserves and smooth streets, but no vision. Let's move ahead and do something daring and a bit risky. I urge your support for the project.
Thank you, Bill. Kevin, welcome, followed by Ray Really.
Hi, Kevin Webb, WAC Communities. We support the Sunrise Mall funding for this pop-up stadium. We think it'd be great for the community. We think it'd be great for our, our new housing community coming in, and so we look forward to it and lend our support. Thank you.
So Kevin, I don't want to delay, but I do have a question for you, because right now, there's not a ton of houses around there. The development you're proposing is right down the street from this. You've built places before, and do you anticipate this causing any issues for those houses down there?
No. We anticipate it adding another amenity for our residents to come in and be able to do, so we look forward to it.
I just want to know where to point them if they come back to us, so thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray Really, followed by Rich Hale.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Ray Really, one of about 50 past presidents of the Rotary Club of Citrus Heights and the second past president to speak before you tonight. My experience with a previous venue or stadium was both as a vendor and a guest. First, as a vendor. With as many as a dozen members of our club working at a time, the Rotary Club of Citrus Heights had the opportunity to serve beer, wine, soft drinks, and water during the Sacramento Capitals tennis matches. Our service was successful as a club fundraiser, earning about $6,000 each season. We also used the matches as an opportunity to tell the community about what we were doing as a club. Conversations about Rotary started with, when people lined up for drinks, and then ended when they had the opportunity to ring the bell and make a tip to our club to support our projects. There were some hot nights, but the heat did not compare to the warmth and goodwill that came from filling glasses for people from around the community and across the region. In fact, some of the best comments came from owners and supporters of other teams who came to this venue and said they had never seen such an energetic and exciting experience for a tennis match. For service organizations, this will offer a tremendous opportunity to serve the community. As a guest, Diane and I went to three or four concerts. They were all great. They were as good as any concerts I've been to, and they turned a parking lot into one of the most enjoyable places to see a concert. I'm not going to try to restate all the reasons. Suffice it to say that this venue will serve the people of Citrus Heights and the community very well for many years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hale, followed by Darlene Lyons.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city councils, and staff. I am Richard Hale, Chair of the Art Boulevard Business Association. We are here tonight to show our support for the application that you have in front of you for the funding for the stadium at the Sunrise Mall. As a new developing association, we recognize the important economic part the Sunrise Marketplace and the Sunrise Mall plays in our city. The city, the stadium The stadium will be another example that City Hall is willing to work with our business owners and property owners to make an investment in our community that will benefit everyone. The project will provide much-needed entertainment and special event opportunities for the city of Citrus Heights and surrounding residents. It will also drive more traffic to our city and will have a positive impact on our sales tax revenue. We do like the idea that the venue can be used throughout the city. The Arm Boulevard Business Association could maybe one day have an event in the use for the stadium along the Arm Boulevard corridor. It'll create a positive economic impact for the business of Arm Boulevard and generate positive awareness of the Boulevard. The city and the city council has a long history of making the right decisions for the growth of our city by supporting projects like the Stones Gambling Hall and the new Dignity Hills building, and investing in projects like the community center, City Hall, Arm Boulevard beautification, and Antelope Road projects. With your yes vote tonight, that tradition of support will continue. I personally like to thank all of you for your support and your commitment to our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Darlene Lyons, followed by Jennifer Erwin.
Good evening, council members. Mayor, my name is Darlene Lyons. I'm the owner of Easy Events. We're an event production company. We did your block party this year. We produce and activate about 60 events, both regionally and across the country. We'd love to bring more business here to Citrus Heights, but one of our challenges is the lack of a large event venue and especially a gated venue. We're excited at the prospect of a pop-up stadium at the Citrus Heights and the opportunity to work with the Sunrise Marketplace to bring new entertainment options to the city. The stadium will be ideally located, and the size will lend itself to numerous uses, including the sporting events, charitable causes, graduations, theaters, concerts, and other performing activities, and hopefully some great festivals. The residents currently, as you know, are leaving the city to go to the surrounding areas for their entertainment needs, and the stadium won't prevent all of the trips outside the city, but will stop the leakage and hopefully keep a lot of the dollars here. The economic impact of a stadium like this is going to be huge. Just the series that we produce for the city of Roseville, I produce downtown Tuesday night series, generates over $4 million in revenue to the local merchants in downtown Roseville, and that's just one night a week, and that's on a Tuesday night. So to give you some idea of the economic impact, so I enthusiastically recommend that you approve the pop-up stadium for the city of Citrus Heights.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Jennifer Erwin, and followed by our last speaker, Paul Summerhousen.
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. My name is Jennifer Erwin. I'm the Director of Events for Entercom Communications, soon to be the second-largest radio station conglomerate in the country once we complete our merger with CBS Radio. I develop all of the events in this market as well as along the west coast, representing our cluster stations. Specifically in this market, it's 98 Rock, 96.9 The Eagle, 106.5 The End, ESPN Radio, and 94.7. We're coming off a weekend where we did 14,000 people at Papa Murphy Park for a Blink 182 concert, and we rolled right into a Golden One Center venue concert for the Lumineers in December. We produce events both large and small, encompassing everything, every type of artist, from country to rock to pop to classic rock and many, many more, as well as farm-to-fork events, vendor festivals, princess parties for kids. We have a multitude of events that we produce every year, and my biggest challenge in my job is finding a venue that can encompass what we're trying to do. The project that Kathy Lynn has put on the table here is ideal for us being able to bring in our own self-produced events, as well as work with our partners like Live Nation and AEG, Bill Grant Presents, to bring tours that they have coming through the country into a venue of that size. It is the perfect size for a lot of these, what we call throwback or nostalgia tours that are coming through that you see happening with like 90s artists, which I don't think are that old, but apparently I am a nostalgia artist now, along with many others. So I would love to see this project move forward. I would love to be able to work in and so close to my own home. That would be remarkable, and I really hope that I see this project move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Summerhousen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Paul Summerhousen. I'm the owner of Sacto Mofo. Before I go into why, I'd like you to support this project. I'd like to thank you for the amendments you made to your ordinances regarding food trucks, because that's what my company specializes in, food truck events. Last year, we did about 1,500 of them in the greater northern California area, including a number of them with your Parks Department, with which who we have a successful partnership, as well as with the Sunrise Marketplace. As someone that has partnerships with all of the venues that have been mentioned tonight, we do events at Golden One, we do events in Roseville and El Grove. We've seen the impact that these events can have. We see the spillover that they have into neighboring communities. When we do our food truck event in El Grove, we get people from as far as Modesto to come up because they don't have those opportunities there. So I definitely strongly encourage you to support this idea because I think it'll achieve exactly the goals that have been mentioned in your staff study. We would be happy to participate in those events as well to help drive that traffic as we think that there's a fantastic opportunity for your city to reinvigorate an area that is not getting the attention it deserves. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, those are all the speaker sheets. So is anybody out there who doesn't like this idea that wants to talk? Okay. Just thought I'd give the other side an opportunity. So no more speakers. Comments from the council before we decide what to do. Brett.
Well, usually when people pay taxes, and I'm going to go back to the sewer credit thing kind of a thing, and they don't probably think that their money might go towards a project that results in people going to concerts and things like that. But every now and then, some things come along, and public-private partnerships make a lot of sense. We're being asked to, if I did my numbers right, to contribute about 12% to the success, the continuing success of Citrus Heights, and that's what this is. This is the continuing success. And I think this kind of venue, as we get older and grayer, is perfect for those artists that we all have loved for 30 or 40 years because their audience has shrank, obviously, as we've gotten older, and we don't hear as good, so we want to be closer to them. So having...
Cut it out, Brett.
Huh?
This is bad timing.
So having the ability to have a concert in such an intimate setting, I think, is extremely smart, and I think will be extremely successful. The one thing that I would like to ask as a council, if we're going to pony up some money, is that as, we always hear about it's nice to have jobs in communities because then the people that live in those communities can go to work there and stuff like that. So obviously, these events will need people to work at them, and if it is okay to do this kind of thing, I would like to see hiring processes for these events that first reach out to Citrus Heights residents, and then if everything is not filled to a satisfaction, then opened up to a larger group. So if we're able to do that, and that meets legal muster or whatever, I think that Citrus Heights residents, since it's their tax dollars that are going towards this, deserve first shot at these jobs as they come up. And there was one, oh, I know, one last thing. It's not every now, it's not very often that we get to enjoy the presence of some very distinguishable people, and I think the fact that there are certain people here show that this is something that's extremely good for Citrus Heights. And there are some people that, there are a lot of people that make a difference in the success of Citrus Heights. There are some people that have made such a difference that without them, Citrus Heights would not be who we are today, and I want to recognize them. The Honorable Mr. and Mrs. Jack Duncan are here. It's very nice to see Gene. We get to have, we have to put up with Jack, but it's nice to see the better half here. The Honorable Mr. Bill Van Duiker is here. The Honorable Mr. Richard Hale is here. And I really want to take a moment to publicly praise the Honorable Kathy Lynn Carpenter. That person there has put a mark on Citrus Heights, the Sunrise Marketplace, and beyond that I feel very confident saying that we would not be here today as successful as we are as a city without her hard work. So thank you.
Mr. Miller.
Well, I heard mention of some 90s music, but I think the demographic here was more 60s, 70s, and the Sail Rock concert series, I think, was very well attended, so we know our demographics in the primary trade area. And I did notice, you know, with these past concert series, they were hastily put together. We had some uncertainty with World Team Tennis, and it was always a last minute, but it was very, it was good to be able to share the cost of the stadium and put these concerts on, and despite doing it at the last minute, they came off very well. And so I'm confident with our being able to provide this grant and cover the cost of the stadium that, and we have time to plan for next season's concert series, that we'll see some great success with this and hopefully sees these things be in concert with some improvements to the mall as well. I still want smooth streets and healthy reserves, and I think we can accomplish all three things by providing this economic development money.
Thanks, Steve. Jeanne.
Well, I believe that this is exactly what the city's development fund was created to support, and I'm all for it. I'm also believe this is exactly what the sewer credit program was created to support. And I just want to thank Devon and all of you from the Sunrise Marketplace Board and the other folks that have come that would support this venue for all of your hard work. I think it looks like it's going to be a yes vote, and I'm just very excited about this. I think that what, with the collaboration that I just heard tonight, with what we can expect going forward, will dwarf what you have done in the past.
Thank you, Jeanne. Al.
I would also like to thank staff for all the work you've done, working with the Sunrise Marketplace folks, everybody that has put effort into this. I think it's a wonderful concept and a wonderful idea. I had a meeting with Kevin Webb some time ago, and I will, Kevin, if they're going to put a target up there for somebody to shoot at, I'll hold the other side of it with you because I absolutely think this is a perfect project for us to do at Sunrise Mall. It's our center location. It creates walkability for so many folks in our community. Plus, we have a way to draw into our central core, people from the outside area. I don't think we could do any better, a project for that area at this point in time, or something that can be used in other areas of our community, all for the same dollars. So I totally support it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Al. So, you know, we've had, all of us have had several meetings with staff on this. Steve and I, from the Finance Committee, met several times on this, pushed back on a couple items. I think we've got a better situation here. I mean, my wife and I went to the concert series thoroughly, enjoyed it. Did we enjoy every concert that was selected? No, but that's kind of the nature of, you know, not, they weren't all our genre, and we don't have to go to those. I do want to make two points to this. When this first came before us, my first thought was, you know, love SMP, you guys are great, but let's be honest, you're not concert promoters. So when I looked back on the previous experience, I said, you know, unless they're going to get out of that business, I'm not interested. So to hear that it is a rental model is truthfully the only way I would support this. If you guys ever want to take up concert promotion, that's great, but not in Citrus Heights, not with this venue. It really needs the professionals to run it. You guys do a great job with the mall, but I think that, you know, there was a lot of lessons learned on both sides when you guys did this before. The other thing I just want to make crystal clear, because there will be a conditional use permit for this, and has to do with the CHPD. Yes, there's going to be a committee that does it. I know private security is cheaper than hiring a sworn officer, but at the end of the day, the sworn officers are the one that protects the citizens of Citrus Heights. So if this thing moves forward, and for whatever reason, the concert venue becomes a drain on the city financially, or the CHPD is over there when we didn't think there would be an issue, and we start getting reports back, then we're going to have to sit down and have a meeting to say either you're going to use the CHPD or you won't have the use permit. So that's my biggest fear, is it's great to say we'll use them when we need them, but each event's going to be different. I went to one concert over there, and it was a country western. I was a little surprised, but those folks were a little wild, to say the least. And, you know...
What do you mean?
Yeah, we're cowboys, and beer bottles were flying, but, you know, that's not what we want to see over there. We don't want to get the black eye. So as long as we're all clear going into this, that you guys are going to do your best, you're going to work with staff, but I'm going to be looking to our, you know, chief and our former chief, our city manager, to give us feedback if it's starting to be an issue where we either need them or we're going to have to look at a different option. So that's the only thing I want to say, and I want you to know that going up front. Fully support it, but it can't be a drain financially to the CHPD if you're not going to use them. So with that, what's the pleasure of the council?
I move approval of staff's recommendation, first to submit our issue resolution that the city approve the revised development fund guidelines, and second, to approve Item B, the resolution for all the rest of it.
All right. So we have approval, several approvals, several seconds. Take your choice, Amy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five zero. So congratulations, folks. All right. We have three department reports, two from the CHPD, and then one on from the Community Economic Development Department. So not sure who's going to give the first one on the SB 10 pretrial, Chief. Welcome, Mr. Lawrence, Chief Lawrence. Pretrial release and bail reform.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any good news?
Council. I know after hearing about pop-up stadiums, it's challenging for me to come talk about Senate Bill 10, but at your request, I wanted to bring back to the council an update on this bill, which has to do with pretrial release and bail reform. So this is very high level. This bill is still in, it's become what's called a two-year bill, so it's been extended into the next legislative season. That's because it got pulled by the author due to the complexity and the quite a bit of opposition pushback. So the good news is this bill will continue to be worked on at the legislative level, and more will come next year. And I share that up front because a lot of what I'm about to share with you is subject to change. Technically known as the California Money Bail Reform Act of 2017, it will be, if passed, it will do away with the monetary bail system as it exists today and always has in the state of California. Instead, it will be replaced with a risk assessment model and a pretrial release. The estimation to the cost of the state of California is estimated to be in the hundreds of millions of dollars. There's some public safety challenges and concerns with this bill. It favors release with the least restrictive means, even in serious cases, retains presumptive release for significant crimes such as domestic violence and human trafficking, requires a judge's order for release within six hours, and this is really complicated for public safety because sometimes when people are taken into custody, six hours, the investigation is still ongoing, and there are often new charges or new crimes that crop up in the first 12, 24, or 48 hours of an investigation. So that's real problematic for public safety. And then, of course, the permissive structure will be insufficient in ensuring the accused returns to court. As mentioned, it's moved to a two-year bill due to the significant opposition. Will continue through the fall with all the stakeholders, working with the governor's office, to try to work out a favorable solution and something that might be workable for all parties. The notion would be to move away from the monetary bail system to this risk assessment. The risk assessment is based on criminogenic behavior and history and background of the criminal or the defendant. So in a nutshell, we will continue to monitor this bill. Even if passed, it wouldn't be implemented until January 1st of 2020. The proponents of the bill estimate that there's roughly about 66% of people in California jails who are awaiting trial or sentencing, so that would be the target. Part of the impetus of this is to reduce the jail populations and to save money, but as mentioned, the analysis so far is this would actually cost a lot of money because the counties would be forced to create these risk assessment teams that have to inform the judges and the judicial system at the county level.
Great. Thank you, Chief. And Jeanne, do you have a quick question?
Well, I think you answered my question, which was, as you were giving your presentation, was why in the world would someone even put this bill forward? But it sounds as though it's another attempt at reducing jail population, basically.
That, and there are other issues, that is, for the state, that is probably the biggest issue, but the proponents of the bill also cite that the bail system leads to greater likelihood of innocent people pleading guilty to a crime because they're sitting in jail, and rather than wait it out, they will take a plea bargain. They estimate that there's longer sentencing... They estimate that there's longer sentences upon conviction, loss of employment, loss of income, housing leading to increase in poverty, or housing loss leading to poverty, family disruption. And these are just facts by the author. I don't know that these are actually, have been vetted out yet.
Right. Okay. But you've answered my question. Thank you.
So Chief, I assume Cal Chief is opposed to this and continuing to work on, through this when it comes up next year as well, and then you'll just keep us in the loop if there's anything that we should know.
Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you. Amy, next item, sorry.
Next presentation, our department report, is an introduction of the Mobile Crisis Support Team addressing mental health calls for service in Citrus Heights.
Welcome, Lieutenant.
Mayor, council. Mayor, council, I am Lieutenant Courtney, Citrus Heights Police Department, here to introduce a new program, which is actually a collaboration between the Department of Health and Human Services, Citrus Heights PD, and Folsom PD. So the crisis response team is made up of a licensed clinical social worker, Kathy Metoyer, and a team of officers. This program is designed for an officer to ride with Kathy on a daily basis. Our program is typically Wednesday through Friday, and then Tuesdays with Folsom PD. This slide is a list of the officers that are assigned as the crisis team. Each one has over 18 hours of crisis intervention training, which is well above the average So the program's countywide. It's been running for over a year now at SACPD and the Sheriff's Department. We started our program at end of August with, again, Wednesdays through Fridays and Tuesdays in Folsom. The program's designed with our counselor riding with the officers, and then a peer counselor that will actually be here at the city Monday through Friday, eight hours a day, to do follow-up, to follow up on the cases that they deal with, with the paired-up team. So the mission of the program is really to partner with Sacramento County Department of Health and Human Services by pairing police officers and a mental health clinician to safely assist citizens in the mental health crisis. So this produces immediate field response to deescalate potential dangerous situations, and we're talking about cases with people that are dealing with a mental crisis, 5150 issues, suicide attempts, kind of a wide variety, even helping the homeless obtain resources. The program's designed with that peer to do a 90-day follow-up, to provide resources and to make sure that these people are on the right track, getting their medications, getting the resources that they can be assigned to, and that could include outside housing. It also provides officer training and community support. So I mentioned the 5150 calls and attempted suicides. It also covers welfare checks, juveniles that are disrupting in a home, but also at school, delinquency calls, domestic disturbances, illegal camping or trespassing, even incomplete phone calls, assault and battery, or sexual assault cases. The program is set up to where the team will be working the average patrol calls, but when a mental health-related call comes up, they're placed on priority to respond to that call in a timely manner. So the goals of the program is really to respond to calls for service associated with individuals experiencing mental health issues, to deescalate situations and to safely assist the citizens in crisis, decrease unnecessary hospitalizations or incarcerations, and provide follow-up assistance and long-term resources, reduce repeat calls for service involving mental health issues, lower the number of incidents where the use of force is required to safely resolve mental health crisis situations, and increase public safety overall. So I have two of our partners that we're collaborating with. I have Division Manager Kelly Weaver from Department of Health and Human Services, and also Jennifer Ryman. She's the Mental Health Program Coordinator. They're here to answer any questions that you might have or explain the program better. I would like to say this program is fully grant-funded, no cost to the city, which is a real benefit to the community and the police department and the city overall.
Great. Thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you, ladies, for coming. You know, I think anybody who's been out with our police department at any call realizes that, you know, unfortunately, their hands are somewhat tied, that there's no, there's no place, there's no place to take a 5150, say. You know, there used to be the place on Broadway, but all that funding's gone away. And even if they take them to the emergency room, you know, those folks aren't trained or capable of, you know, they have them there for an hour, and then they let them go, and they're just over there. So glad to see this program's coming about, be interested in hearing the feedback, because like anything, as you go through it, there will be, you know, lessons learned in moving it, but there's a lot of folks out there that need help, let's be honest, and I'm just glad to see it and really glad it's grant-funded, but, you know, that's beside the point. But thank you for what you do, or thank you for what you're going to do. Questions from the council, for anybody up there? All right. But we look forward to it, and I would like a report back as this goes on, just the successes. You know, I mean, it's got to be better than doing nothing, so thank you for bringing this forward.
All right, I think we have one more department report, and then city manager reports, and maybe the end of the meeting, but Amy, last...
Our last department report is update on the Mitchell Farms Development Project.
All right, so who's giving that? Colleen. No wonder why Kevin stuck around.
Good evening, council. Colleen MacDuffie, Planning Manager for the city. Just here tonight to give you a really brief check-in and update on the Mitchell Farms project. I have a map up here. I know you're all familiar where it is, but for those who in the audience are watching at home, it's about a 55-acre project, the home of the Sunrise Golf Course. Many people know that area. It would be accessed off of Arcadia and Fair Oaks. It is, it will contain about 260 homes and about 20 acres of open space along the creek area. So last time we were at the council was last April, when we were bringing to you the contract for the EIR consultant, and since April, really, that's where the bulk of our time and the focus has been, is on working on the environmental impact report, and they've been doing all their specialized studies, traffic, noise, air quality, the different studies that go into the EIR, and that will, that document, that draft environmental impact report will be coming out before the end of the year, and then we'll start having public hearings and bring in the project to the planning commission, the council, next spring. So that's an update of where we are, and would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Brett, question?
Is that a traffic circle on Arcadia?
Yes.
Sweet. And have a fountain?
Pardon me? I'm sorry.
Fountain?
No fountain.
I don't see a fountain in that. Any questions? I mean, I know this has been a process. Anytime you get into an EIR, it's, you know, that usually takes a year or so, so I'm glad you gave us an update on the timeframe. I did meet with Ted and Kevin earlier last week, or was it this week? It was probably this week, to run through some of this, and, you know, I think all in all, when it's all said and done, this is going to be a great addition for the city. And let's be honest, you know, there's a housing crisis out there. We don't have a lot of brand-new homes to sell here in town because we're built out, so I think they're bringing a viable product, and where else are you going to find a development that's going to have 20 acres of open space? I think it's a pretty neat project. Looking forward to it moving forward. Thank you, Colleen. There's no other questions? Great. Amy, back to you.
Next item, city manager items, there are none. Last items, items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Anybody up here want to drag this out anymore, or are you guys good? All right, I will close the meeting. Thank you, all.
Do it tonight.